Let's address the Pledge of Allegiance, State of Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting is provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and Star Ledger on December 18th, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are filed as the city clerk.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one time around?
Hold the floor.
The public is expected... The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments. We did already.
Who's up first?
Please come, please come to the mic. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Arnold Fallhaber at Asbury Park. Okay, tonight I had two questions, but now it's kind of gotten a little further than that. First question is, how's the Sunset Avenue Walk Bridge coming?
It's jacked.
Updates?
I couldn't tell you, Arnold, off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we will report on that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is, with the Springwood Avenue development, I think it's great. We need the development over there, but of course, Mr. Lefredo is a realtor, why can't we give them a price, have them do a contract for sale, so that we're all on the same page before we give away the city? The parking, the pilot, you know, why can't we give them a price? Sure, but let's set a price. Let's get a deposit, and then see where they go from now. You know, I'm sure they don't have enough money to do the project. The third thing is, Mayor, I apologize for you getting a parking ticket even though I had nothing to do with it, but I've received three tickets in the last three weeks for handicap parking, which I have no idea what the situation is with that. You know, I have handicap plates and get three tickets.
This is not my mic. Is it a perforation coming from my microphone going off?
It's just the whole system.
Okay, you know what? I'm glad that you came to the mic and mentioned that, because you're not the only person that has mentioned that to me, and I'm trying to get to the bottom line. At one point, you had a handicap sticker, and there was not a handicap space available you could park somewhere else. Evidently, at some point, that changed. I'm not sure when, and I think the public room needs clarification on that.
Yeah, but I understand we're going to start numbering the handicap spaces. I think that's kind of ridiculous. Are we that desperate for money?
Would you like to comment?
Sure, I'd love to comment. You know, the state statute doesn't provide handicapped individuals free parking. What it does is, it tells the city that it can't issue in a 24-hour period a late parking fine. But handicapped individuals are required to pay for parking, just like any other taxpayer or visitor in a city. However, our machines can't recognize whether you've paid the first time or not. I don't know how you received your tickets or where you were parked. Perhaps you received them and you were parked at a yellow curb. It is under consideration, but there hasn't been a decision that's made yet.
Thank you.
I will try to get clarification on that. Will you back to you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I appreciate it. It's just, it's kind of annoying to have to come down and, you know, bring the sticker and registration, and, you know, the tickets are dismissed, so that would lead me to believe that there's something not right somewhere after automatically being dismissed, so... Oh, I'm sorry. The last question. The cameras? Cameras? Okay.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Stanley Conover. I reside at 1012 Fifth Avenue, Admir Park, New Jersey. For as of four months, I'd like to say thanks to the township and the city for taking care of the lights in the alleyway. That was a blessing. And I'd like to thank the Admir Park Police Department for doing a marvelous job. So, continue to do good work, and I'll continue to make all the service. Thank you.
I thank you for that, and I think almost all of us are very happy to see that the Asbury Park Police Department is walking the streets, and there is a more assist, a sense of safety.
Excuse me, sir. Could you spell your name for the record?
Sorry?
Mr. Conover.
Could you please spell your last name for the record?
C-O-N-O-V-E-R, Conover.
Thank you.
You're up.
And just to follow up on that, I got two emails from people who's back by the house facing the alley, and the lights are making that...
Amy, we couldn't hear you.
I've gotten two e... I don't, is this on? I've gotten two emails from people also crediting the police department for putting lights in the alleyways where it has absolutely reduced or increased their quality of lighting. So, kudos to you, sir.
Denise Richardson, Ridge Avenue. I express my concern with Don about the parking. There's five churches in that area, and if any of you have been in the area when there was a funeral, a large funeral, there's nowhere to park. The street is full. And the other idea, as far as parking a block away and walking to your house, I walked from my driveway to my front porch and I got robbed. Can you imagine a senior or a mother with children taking that walk? I don't think it's a good idea. And the other thing is, I have a question. On Verizon, it comes up with Asbury Park, and you hear the birds and you see the beach. Are we paying for that? I mean, because nothing shows up. And that's two channels.
Do you have any other questions?
In regards to the snow ordinance, I know we had brought it up before, where possibly we could put up signs where there's no parking, either on the left side or the right side, when the streets are covered with snow. Can you imagine that on Springwood Avenue with no parking already?
The question that you asked about AP-TV, I'm going to let you go ahead and answer that, okay?
Uh, AP-TV's on the air.
Please come to the mic and answer her.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. My name's John Kaplow. I'm the head of AP-TV. We went on the air last week. It's a soft launch. We have not advertised it widely. We are on the air seven days a week from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Right now, we're just rotating through a lot of different programs. Many are made in Asbury Park. Some are coming from outside, from Brookdale or Rutgers, but anything that has an interest or citizens will show. By next week, we'll have an actual program scheduled. Certainly will make watching a little bit easier, but as we train people and learn the equipment, as they say, we're going through a phase right now. We're calling it a soft launch. We expect a formal launch with advertising and a big rollout sometime in very early September, hopefully right after Labor Day. Thank you.
Did you stand your 15 seconds of standing?
Yes, I did, in front of the camera.
And it's not costing us anything. You forgot that part.
Well, we do have a $25,000...
Interest of full disclosure.
Pat Fasano, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. First to speak to you with my formal capacity of homeowner president. I'd like to invite everyone here in attendance and tell your friends that on August 24th, outside of the lot next to Asbury Lane, so we're going to be hosting a fundraiser. It's to raise a scholarship fund for next year. This year, we gave three $500 scholarships. I hope next year, we could give at least three $1,000 scholarships. So, it's going to be Sunday, August 24th, between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock. It's going to be a barbecue with music, food, and drink outside of Asbury Lane. So, tell your friends, come, spend your money. It's going to the kids. With a nonprofit organization, 100% of the money, 100% of the money collected goes directly to the kids. Second thing is, I'd like to thank Amy for her request for the less-than-block-by-block development. I'd like to say that I personally am paying taxes on 10 lots that I cannot develop in WRA. I have site plans already developed, and I'd like to come to the board with them. I'll be able to provide one and a half parking spots. On a 50-by-150 lot, I can fit six units. They'll all have an ocean view, and there'll be nine parking spots. No barriers required. I'm ready to go. I could be in the ground this year. Well, probably not this year, next year. But thank you for that, Amy. The other thing is, the parking has been a big problem, but listen, think about New York City. Does New York City have a parking problem? They built decks, okay? We need to build decks. We need to be a responsible city and stop saying, "Well, we can't have restaurants in development," because guess what? We're already a restaurant destination. So, we need to build decks, and that's what the parking consultant's going to tell you, and we're going to figure out how to do it. I personally think that the train station would be an excellent location for a large deck, a 500-car deck, especially if we can get the one-stop ticket, where we get the dual-use diesel and electric train. And people are parking in Long Branch and getting on the train and coming to Asbury for events, because, you know, parking is free on the weekends at the Long Branch train station. It's a sea of parking in Long Branch, and it's empty on the weekends. You can park there for free, hop on the train, and get off in Asbury Park, which is another logical solution. And the last thing in 26 seconds is, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, okay? I can't build three-bedroom apartments and rent them for $1,100. In fact, at the Mercury, my property taxes alone on a single unit are $750 a month. So, these companies that build this low-income housing need to be subsidized. Figure it out. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Michael Mills have come here tonight. He's from the Food Bank of Monmouth and Ocean Counties, 3300 Route 66. Route 66 in Neptune. First and foremost, Mayor, thank you for coming to the Food Bank for a visit. I'm sure you had a wow experience with the tour that our ED gave, Carlos Rodriguez. What I'd like to talk about tonight is what the Food Bank has been doing over the past few years. First and foremost, we distributed over 10 million pounds of food last year alone, and our network of 300 pantries, soup kitchens, group homes, senior centers. So, we're widespread, and food insecurity is a major issue in Monmouth and Ocean Counties, much more than what we see. Monmouth County is more concentrated in a few areas. Ocean County is more widespread. But I'd like to talk about tonight is our second part of our mission, what we're doing to build food security within Monmouth and Ocean Counties. Last year, we gave back to the community over $10 million, and that's in the form of free tax preparation, our Healthcare Navigators Program, and all the other financial assistance that we provide through our Benefits Program. The Food Bank is much more than a warehouse full of food. I'd invite everyone to come in, take a tour, see what you can do to help, because there's a lot of ways that we really need to solve hunger, because it affects us all, and it much more than what we know. Children, for example, has a lot of psychological effects of hunger. Our culinary job training program actually provided over 5,000 meals to the Boys and Girls Club last year alone. So, that's a huge success. The organization's growing, and what I'd like to say is, everyone to come by, be an advocate against hunger, and just be a supporter.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Morano, D. Avenue.
Everybody can hear. It doesn't have to go anywhere. It's fine.
Okay, I think I could talk loud. I was one of two people that attended that planning board meeting with the Michaels Corporation, and I'm here to say that they are very, very politically motivated. They're in 43 states to begin with. Why they're coming to Asbury, I don't know, but I think it's because they're probably going to get the land for a dollar. I don't know. Nobody talks about the land that belongs to the city of Asbury Park, and plus, the parking is a very big issue. If the planning board voted 6 to 1 against it, why would this council vote for it? What do you have a planning board for if you're not going to abide by their rules? They're entitled to... They're sitting there looking at all the plans and how they're going to look. First of all, 64 units, that's, to me, since I've lived here since 1967, that's tomorrow's slums, because I saw apartment houses go up in this town, and I said, "Oh, they're going to look better," and all this. Well, come to 8th Avenue and see how many people are living in one apartment house, and you can't control it. And the same thing's going to happen here. Why can't you have homeownership? Go to Cliffside Park and see what they're doing there. They're building duplexes. They're cheaper than one-family houses. They got duplexes all over. Why can't you look at other towns and see what they're doing? This Michael group is not the answer. They have no skin in the game, like John said. Absolutely not. They're waiting for all this money to come in so they could come to Asbury. So, what's the purpose of having them? I do want to see development, but not that, not 64 units. That's going to be a hell in Asbury Park. You've got down to Boston Way, 126 families moved out. Now, you're going to put 64 families back, almost the same location across the street. It's ridiculous. And the other thing I want to say, well, that's all I'm going to say about that. I got a notice that something's coming to Asbury Park on Sunday, August 24th, a truck, some kind of a truck thing. It says, "A truck notice." Does anybody know what that's about? It had a little map along the side of it. They better not be coming up 8th Avenue, I'll tell you that. That's a real statue labor. Does anybody know about it? I called three departments here. Nobody knows anything about it.
Triathlon. It's a rock. It's a triathlon.
Oh, is that what that is? So, what are they going to do? Try trucks up 8th Avenue? It's not, it's not running, is it?
Lori Ross, Westside Community Center, 115 Dwood Avenue. I was at the planning board meeting with regards to the Michaels project with Ms. Morano, and I will tell you this. She's absolutely right, and as so many other people said, the way to move people from poverty to sustainability to prosperity, as Mr. Fasano knows, is homeownership. 64 rental units with a targeted population of the entire county. And I don't care what your redevelopment director says, because I'm still waiting for him to find out if they can even build on Bradley Cove. Regardless of what Don Sammet says, the reality is, is that if you look at the median household income for renter occupied folks in the town, it's actually 25,266. Numbers can be manipulated. The reality is, is yet again, here's another developer, it's another development, it's new construction, but it doesn't include the people that live here. I sit on the board. I serve every day, all day, for a nonprofit organization that's been in this town for 19, since 1942, okay? We are under siege. We are under siege. We are under siege. To Mayor Campbell's point, you know, you feel like it was selective enforcement. You feel like you were targeted. I remember a year ago, going to you about the selective code enforcement that we were experiencing at the Westside Community Center, and you did absolutely nothing. We got called to court for the first time, in my memory and most others, with regards to the strip of grass not cut. So, I know what selective enforcement says. Chief, Deputy Chief, Acting Chief, whatever he is, Solerino, was hitting us for violations left and right. Also, when you talk about selective enforcement, to your point, you have city employees that park in city council spots, and then seemingly never get tickets. So, again, there's a lot of disparity going on in this town. And you know what? I know that there's some council members here that ran on a ticket of Asbury first. Well, I will tell you, I live in Long Branch, two blocks from the North Long Branch Beach. It's lovely, okay? The children and the families in this town deserve to have access to opportunity as well. They're not getting jobs because you have employees that don't even know how to look at the minority set-asides, your contracting issues with regards to giving contractors opportunity. You have a Section 3 monitoring component of your community development block grant that you give to organizations that are more politically correct, that are building on the avenue, which is Interfaith Neighbors, so I'm glad they're here. The reality is, is that I will continue to serve this community. I will continue to volunteer my time, but y'all who ran on Asbury first, all of you should be ashamed of yourself because you're letting the store go out the window. There is very limited opportunity for the existing Asbury Park residents now.
Let me blow this first. It seem like it's a little bit hot. Dwayne Small, 1304 Madison Avenue. I'm also a licensed contractor. The question that Arnold asked, y'all could, he asked about the cameras, what's being done. Y'all got some money. Y'all could answer it when I get finished. I want to thank you, Mr. Kelly and Cassandra, for initiating this thing with, in regards to getting contractors' information so that it can be handed on to the developer. Now, the thing is, we must also follow that through to ensure that, you know, that these contractors are actually given an opportunity to bid on these projects. And also, there's a big issue going on in this city. I travel this city every day. Every day. I'm over there seeing what's going on, who working on these projects. Asbury Park residents that are unemployed, we're competing for jobs against undocumented immigrants. Everybody in here know, if you go down them towns, you go down Cookman Avenue, go down that beach, you go look in them kitchens. Who in there cooking? What are y'all doing about it? It's a lot of contractors and developers around here that's using undocumented labor. It's against the law. What is the city going to do about it? Because when you look at it, if somebody could come in who don't have the proper credentials and he's working, that means somebody in the city not working. So, what are they doing? They on the streets. If y'all go around here, you ride around here, young kids are roaming these streets every day. What about the kids that's on summer vacation? Then y'all talk about a gang problem. That right there contributes to the gang problem. Those who hire undocumented workers are contributing to the gang problem. Yes, they are, and they know who they are. They come in here, they act like they this and that, but they're actually breaking the law. I asked it on the last council, I asked Kevin about it. Put in the ordinance called E-Verify. Anybody that's working in this city must be, they must have working papers or a resident. We have issues with that. The question again, is Asbury Park residents and contractors competing against the unscrupulous contractor that got the undocumented worker, or are the local laborers competing against the undocumented labor? This is a serious issue. You just heard Senator Beck said on TV about freehold, about their schools. We got to pay for this. We suffer. We going to pay for it one way or the other. We going to pay for it on the front end by doing something, giving the people opportunities? Or we going to pay for it on the back end with the police, and people suffering? And hopefully, it's not one of us, like the sister Denise, that's getting robbed, because these young men don't got it. And I was at the store today. It was a little kid, let me finish, Maro. It was a little kid at the store. I know this kid. He was standing in front of the store. I said, "What you doing?" He said, "Can I get $2?" I took him in the store. I said, "What you want $2 for? You want something to eat?" He said, "Yeah." I bought this little kid something to eat. And there was another kid in there who worked in the store. He this big. His parents was teaching him how to operate the castrist. I told that young boy, I said, "You see that? That's what you should be doing."
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1410 Summerfield, Asbury Park. I have a couple of questions. Oh, first, he asked you, this isn't part of my time, but he asked you a question that was never answered. First is about the incident of the predator, me being on a school board and a parent. I have never received a notice about the predator that is employed by the city. I have not received a notice or anything. In fact, the school board, to my knowledge, haven't received anything saying that he is employed by the city and he's in the city. So, is that something that's going to be going out anytime soon? Okay, and then second, just to address just part of what King was saying. It is a serious problem, actually across the street about undocumented workers, which I love everybody. But I seen workers come in for Sandy to help build in from Texas, across the street from me. They came in from Sandy. They had nothing. They came in a little car, a van dropped them off. It's a couple of years later, they're driving four-by-four trucks, pulling out little boats in the backyard, really thriving, but yet I know there's been people down the street unemployed forever and cannot get a job. And also, when Sandy happened, I know young people went down to the beach who are laid off when they brought the people in from Texas, literally from Texas. So, that's a big issue, especially with the youth. And then also, I brought up before in the last meeting, that the school board has increased the tax levy on the residents of the city by $1.4 million, which is unneeded. But yet, no ones have ever come to the city to say to our state monitor and to our acting superintendent, who hasn't left yet, "We don't need the money. Why are y'all taking our money?" I think that's the purpose of the board, to say, you know, checks and balances, because the super, the monitor don't listen to the board. So, why don't they listen to the city? It's $1.4 million on the back of the people who are existing residents of the city, not the residents who are coming. They don't have to pay it. But the existing residents had that tax levy, and I say it again. Each year, they can increase your taxes by 2%, which would be another point something million dollars, or 1.2, without asking you. Every November, it can go around like clockwork, clockwork, clockwork. And it's not for the people who are coming. It's for you who are sitting here crying each week about your taxes and how much your property taxes are going up. It's about you paying so much for your property that you can't redevelop. So, it's just saying, when are you going to come to the school board and kind of link up and say, "Okay, we have to have some kind of camaraderie, checks and balances," because people are running out, like she said, the store out the window.
You know what? I'm willing to talk offline with you in regards to that, but the board, the city of Asbury Park, and Mr. Kelly, you correct me if I'm wrong, we really don't have any influence over what goes on in the Board of Education. Back in September, I sat down and I did meet with Mr. Superintendent Mann, Mahan, and also Carol Morris, but it was just to introduce myself. Mr. Kelly, is there anything that you want, in this form of government, and I was with Mayor Camden last week. If there's that form of government, the mayor has a lot of influence on what goes on in the board event, turning over to you.
Well, the city has an independent elected board, so yes, city council has little influence. However, I have met several times with the superintendent and the school administrator, both Councilman Moore and Lefredo, tomorrow evening, or meeting with myself and members of the Public Works Committee. I could say that we are an Abbott district, and approximately 90.2% of the funding for the school comes from the state, and to continue to receive that level of funding, they want to increase on an annual basis the amount that the city residents... basis the amount that the city residents contribute. So to continue to get that level of state aid, there is a requirement that the municipal portion be increased. So we do meet and chat with the school officials on a regular basis, and wherever we see improvement, we discuss that with them.
Next.
Hello.
This is the deputy mayor. This is the very end.
No, President, thank you.
Jer, Jer.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerus, Grand, Long Branch, New Jersey. By the way, I love that little clock up there, I put it on Facebook for you. Okay, the other thing is, I've been asking, when are we gonna have time clocked for the employee of the city? I heard someone said the ordinance suggested it and nothing was done about it. I also brought up the idea, if someone needs a summer vacation and they work for the city of Asbury Park, maybe we only leave them in that position. I think that's a valid point. The other thing, bi-weekly meetings for monthly report for the public review, that was not my idea, that was Jim Keating's idea when he ran for council. It was a good idea then, and it's a good idea now. Now, I like John Moore's idea, choose in a bedroom for parking spots, but what I like better is Memorial Drive was part of the transit development that they were, the transit village that they were gonna build. Building a floor to the housing on the corner of Springwood and Memorial was not the best use for that property. And it really bothered me that Don Sammet kept saying that professionals this, professionals that. Well, I have a good example to tell you. The Ark was built by farmers, the Titanic was built by professionals. I just wanted to give you another laugh. The other thing is, we've been asking the council, what are you gonna do about the bad deal with I-Star with the infrastructure? I read in the paper about possible tickets, this, that. I wanna hear that you guys are gonna do something to fix the I-Star mistake. You didn't make it, but you can fix it. And the other thing is, I really want you to take a look at the Transit Village. Denise Richardson brought up about the churches when they're the funeral, I forgot about that. But there'd been time when there's no parking spots in that area, and then you get a dump sixty-five families there. And I hate to say it, when they were saying, did the taxi company do a survey and see how many people could use taxis? I have an answer for that. Only God knows, and he ain't telling us. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Nyambi Alifranzis. I'm kinda new to this whole thing, but I'm kinda new to Asbury, but that's neither there. Bottom line, redevelopment is coming to Asbury Park, whether we have the sixty-five buildings, units, or whatever, or we don't, redevelopment is coming to Asbury Park. But with that in mind, when we have redevelopment, often the smaller people get forgotten, and I just hope that the sense of community in Asbury Park doesn't get forgotten. So what is the council doing as far as things like community gardens, community centers, you know, things to, I know the gentleman mentioned, you know, children just roaming freely for summer vacation, things like that. So I think that Asbury Park would benefit greatly from recreation center. So what has the council, you know, come up with as far as community is concerned?
Why don't you bring that briefly? In September, as I mentioned before, there will be a seminar about cities going through the transition, similar to the transition that we are going through. There is a group, Can and Community Action Network, that was formed last year, that has a number of branches. And one of the things that they are dealing with are jobs, recreation. We have something called Super Safe Summer, to allow the youth in the community to find out some of the activities that they could participate in. One of the things that I hope you get a chance to do is talk to Alicia Floyd in our Recreation Department, and she'll be able to tell you a lot of things that the city is doing as far as recreation.
Okay, cool.
Just because you mentioned community gardens, I'll just, if you, if you actually look out the back here, Asbury Park, I think is one of the only cities that has a community garden of the city property. So there's beds that people rent, about eight, eight to ten beds people rent, it's a pretty valuable amount. But there's also beds that are free for the public. So when you get off the train, when you're coming from the post office, you are more than welcome to grab anything from that community garden.
Oh, that's cool. Would you guys like consider expanding community garden? Cause Asbury Park is huge, so, and like, I didn't know about that, and that also has to do with just making citizens aware of different things. Would you guys be interested in expanding that? And like recruiting volunteers, just for all community aspects and services? Cause I would love to volunteer.
Two weeks, meetings ago, there was someone that I know that came to the city council meeting and wanted to adopt a empty, empty lot. And the city council agreed to let him go ahead and do that.
Well, I'll volunteer.
So, but just give me break down your name and email before you leave, and I'll, I'll make sure you're at least, at the very least, on the environmental portion.
Thank you. Do you guys need me to spell my name for this? It's Nyambi, my first name, it's N-Y-A-M as in Mary, B-I, and my last name is Ali hyphen Francis, A-L-I hyphen F-R-A-N-C-I-S. Oh, and I live on Eighth Avenue, I think I said that, though. Thank you. Oh, my phone number?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jackie Pappas, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. We all had a little bit of a chuckle earlier about the radio station broadcasting live from the Asbury Park boardwalk, so I thought I would share with everybody what that project actually amounts to in short order. It's actually sponsored by New Jersey Natural Gas, and it's a program called Pipeline to the Community. Every hour, the radio station is broadcasting live on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from the beginning of the summer all the way through September. And every hour on the hour, they have a different nonprofit from Asbury Park that has the opportunity to talk to the greater Monmouth Ocean County community about the programs that they have here in the Asbury Park area. So if you have a nonprofit and you haven't been on that station yet, suggest you either contact myself or Tom Hayes from New Jersey Natural Gas. They actually made that possible. The Chamber of Commerce is also sponsoring that, and they are in fact donating a tremendous amount of publicity for Asbury Park by not only broadcasting live there, but also doing announcements and blogs, and usually their social media presence, to broadcast Asbury Park as a destination for visitors and residents. So I thought you'd all like to know a little bit more of the story behind the request for them to possibly be able to park with a little more ease. As it is, New Jersey Natural Gas and the Chamber of Commerce is providing that parking for them by paying. So thank you.
Thank you. Jackie just referred, also said, when you spoke to them for a while, they're also supporting a local band and local music.
Absolutely.
Lou Perici, veterans of foreign wars and Catholic war veterans of Asbury Park. The tears rolled down Deborah Dick's cheeks as she pointed to her son's name etched on the black granite wall. Just one name among the fifty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty and the Vietnam Memorial. He was just twenty-one years old when he was killed, she said. He was just there for three months. She paused for a moment and said, "You know, it was a crazy war to begin with. We shouldn't have been there in the first place." Well, we were there, and three million men served in Vietnam, one and a half million actually in combat there. Last Saturday, the Ocean Township Historical Society honored those veterans. Some of you may be old enough to remember the Vietnam War. Three million men served in Vietnam. For those of us at home, the war was fought on television, and we can still remember the iconic images that were brought to us every night as we sat down after supper. We remember very well the body bags of our troops, the body counts of the enemy. You remember, of course, the smiling Jane Fonda as she sat on a gun mount in Hanoi. And we remember the screaming sounds of that young girl as she ran down Highway One, her clothes burned by the napalm. Yes, these images we remember, and when the men came home, they did not receive the honors that men of previous wars. And so that when you see a Vietnam veteran, you may walk up to him and thank him for a service, because they did not receive the welcome nor the honors that they truly deserved. And they certainly, certainly have earned that in the memory of our historic and honored soldiers that fought for our liberties. Thank you.
Number four, Wesley.
Question, please, call in favor.
Right now, the city is working with the State Division of Purchasing. We've been talking to two separate vendors that have state contract numbers. We questioned whether we could use these state contracts for the repair of all of the meter, or all of the.
I have it previously.
This, this item has been on, on the agenda. Anyone could have, could have questioned it, it was on the agenda, it was distributed early.
This is talked about for years.
Why are we talking about it after the vote statement? You should have had the guy up here talking about it, saying, you know, I'm for the bump outs, I think they're brave, but you know what? Little was slowed it down, I'm sorry. We're doing this after.
Move it. Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yes.
The item listed as M is a duplicate of I.D. N.
When do I do my reservation? Do I still go during this one?
Okay. And the I.D. N is also a duplicate of K.
The two items that are listed as M and N on the revised agenda are actually duplicate hits of resolutions that were set forth earlier on the agenda, so there's no need for council to address them, cause they've already been addressed.
I'm going to make a motion to add I.D. to the agenda, which would be the letter M, a vote to direct the city manager to send a letter to I-Star seeking consent to amend the waterfront redevelopment plan and agreement to permit lot by lot building.
So this is gonna require two votes. The first is to amend the agenda and put it on, and the second vote is actually to authorize and direct Jack to send the letter.
Move to put it on.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, then, vote to direct the city manager to send a letter to I-Star seeking consent to amend the waterfront redevelopment plan and agreement to permit lot by lot development. Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. We are now on to ordinances. We have an ordinance vacating the Wesley Place right-of-way in Asbury Park, New Jersey, and the public hearing on this would be held on August twentieth, twenty fourteen.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
An ordinance vacating the Applegate Place right-of-way in Asbury Park. The public hearing would be held on August twentieth.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Lee's Lane right-of-way in Asbury Park, and the public hearing would be on August twentieth.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
We have an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan relating to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. The public hearing would be on August twentieth.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Ordinance E, we have a bond ordinance providing for acquisition of various equipment and vehicles in and by the city of Asbury Park in the county of Monmouth, appropriating one million five hundred thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollar bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. And the public hearing would be August twentieth.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Anything else to be of interest? Move to return.
Home, home favor?
Aye. I would have a question tomorrow.